I will jump right into it and call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. Welcome. Our, I'm going to dispense with the usual introductions because our names are on our pictures and it's hard to go around the table when there's no table to go around. So we'll jump right in to things. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Kari is seconding the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections, clarifications on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
We have to do a roll call.
Roll call, Lorraine.
All right, we'll start with you, John. John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
David Ferguson.
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Assari.
Aye.
And Kathy Loser.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And next is our monthly report from our director, Marilyn Wood. Anything in there particular you want to draw our attention to, Marilyn?
Just to ask you all to take a look at that little pre-library report. It's a pretty good example of some of the ways that we've continued to reach out in the community during the pandemic. And then also to add something, and that is, you know, we have the mask and the kiosk mask that is part of the Bloomington Mask Drive. And they have now distributed more than 50,000 masks across Monroe County. And since July, we asked how many they had distributed to the library. And since July, they've been tracking and we are their number one place. Six, 6,578 masks have been distributed through the library so far. So there are plenty of people who are coming here and trust the library to come to get a mask. In addition to that, Brian Leibacher said that we distributed a little over 2,200 adult masks during 2020 and another 210 children's while we were open. So there have been plenty of masks picked up here at the library.
Any questions for Marilyn on her report, comments?
There's so many new ways that the library is reaching out that it's really impressive. And I know my children, we've picked up some of the make and takes that you talked about. It's been fantastic because being at home and not in school, my kids are schooling from home. It's been an extra little activity for them, a way to still engage in arts. So I just really appreciate it as a member of the community and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for passing that along. The take and make hits have been very popular, not, not just with kids. We did some, we're doing library loot with adults and it's been very popular as well where adults are getting not only recommendations based on their own reading preferences, but also a few little crafts and other things in their, in their bags. And they're really popular. People are really appreciating it. So thanks for passing that along.
Thank you. Moving on, under old business, we get an update on branch planning.
And we have Christine Matthew and Chris Lloyd from, from our architects who are here to talk about just an overview of some of the things that you've seen already, but to give you a really good view of what the exterior of our building is going to look like and what the layout is at this point in our design phase. And also they brought along with them two of our engineers so that we can address any questions that you might have that are related to any of our mechanical systems or other things that are on the design right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Christine and Chris right now.
Okay. Well, thank you, Marilyn. I need to. Okay, can everyone see? The view? Okay. So it also looks like we have a third engineer from Circle Design. Yakov Kitzis has joined us too. So just to, since you've all seen the schematic design that we completed back in December, we will just give you a quick overview this evening and then open it up to questions you may have. So the view that you see here is from the southwest, looking towards the west end of the building and the main entry. The parking lot is here off to the west. And then you come around and here is the main entry here. And then we have the staff entry back here off of, on the west. And see if I can, so moving around, this is moving around to the southeast, looking back on the building. Again, to orient you, we have the main entry here. And as you know, our site drops pretty dramatically to the east. And we have, this area here is the grand main stair that brings you in from the parking garage down below. And then there is a vestibule and access here that comes out to the site and an amphitheater area here to the east end of the building. Now I didn't go around the building, but this is the west end of the building. And some of the exterior materials that we are looking at, we have limestone areas on the building, metal panels much, or very similar to the metal panels that we used over on the Elletsville Project Edition a couple of years ago. And then one of the cost savings things that we have been looking at is reducing the amount of limestone and switching to a colored split face concrete block.
So you're.
And then moving on around, this is the north side of the building. This large area here of glass curtain wall and metal panels is the main reading room and then the quiet reading space over here off to the side. And this bay projection here is the children's area and then the large meeting room. Again, the parking is here to the west. And as we come down the hill, here is the drive that brings us in to the parking garage down below the, the main level. And then this is just a larger blow up of the main entry area here. So, and then moving on to the plan. There we go. So here is the lower level, the parking garage area. Again, parking, main parking area is up above here to the west. We come down the drive and in the garage entry here.
We're still seeing the front. Oh, there you go.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Christine just informed me it didn't switch for some reason. I was looking at the floor plan. No one else could see it. Okay. So going back again, the parking area is here to the west. And we come down the drive here on the north side of the building and into the parking garage here at the entry. We have parking spaces down here and then library support spaces like the mechanical room, electrical room, plumbing room are here, a couple of ADA handicap parking spaces and then library storage here. And then we come along here and the elevator lobby at this lower level is here. And the elevator then comes in and takes you up to the main level. And then here is the entry into the lower level of the stair. And so you come into this vestibule area and lobby area and then come up the stair where you land here just outside the elevator on the, on the main level of the library. Quickly here, coming in the main entry from the parking garage, we have the lobby here with public support services. The computer access area is here. We have a large conference room here that overlooks the stair coming up. The quiet reading room is tucked here to the southeast. And then we have the main reading room here with the large windows, taking advantage of the views to, to the east. The children's area is here with a children's program space located just adjacent to that. We have a reception lobby here with a large meeting space here with an upperable partition so that that can be divided down into two smaller meeting spaces. And then the teen area is located adjacent to that with a meeting room here for the teens. The staff lounge area is located here on the northwest corner. Here is the staff entry here. And then off of the main lobby, here we have the teaching kitchen. And the administrative offices are here. And here is the materials processing area. And then here is an all ages collaborative space located here. So I know there were some questions that I'll try to quickly address. And if I don't catch them all, we'll open it up to question and answer here in just a moment. But some of the things that we have been looking at for energy efficiency, air infiltration into the building. Each of the entries, the main entry has a vestibule which acts as an airlock, helping to keep the warm or cold air from rushing into the building as people enter and exit. There is also a vestibule associated with the staff entry over here on the west. And then down on the lower level, as you come in from the parking garage, there is a lower level vestibule here separating that from the stair and, and the rest of the library. We've been looking at the exterior wall system because that is one of the main drivers of energy efficiency. And one of the things that we are doing is the wall system will be either, on the outside will be either the metal panels or limestone veneer. And then we will have three inches of rigid insulation on the outside of the metal wall framing. And what that allows us to do is to get continuous insulation without any thermal breaks, allowing cold to penetrate into the framing of the building. And then we will have the, the wall framing, oh. And then just underneath the rigid insulation will be what is called a building wrap or Tyvek is, is just a commercial name for that. And when that is properly installed and the joints and seams taped, that gives us our barrier between air infiltration in, into the building. And then there would be the typical building sheeting plywood and then the framing of the walls and then the interior would have the interior chipboard drywall on, on the inside of that. So we do have a lot of glass and windows on the project and taking advantage of all the fabulous views we have of the woods and taking advantage as much as we can of, of the natural daylight. We're currently doing research on what glass we will be using and specifying for the project, making sure that we're providing the most efficient in terms of gain plus. And on the east side and on the south side with the aluminum curtain wall system that makes up those large expanses of windows. We're looking at sun shade devices on the south. They will most likely be horizontal sun shade devices that help shade the windows from the southern light coming in particularly in the window. And that will help with glare and bright light, but still allow the light in. On the east side, we're looking at vertical fins that would extend off of the curtain wall system to help us with light control in the early mornings or as the sun comes up in the east until it starts to get high enough in the sky that that is no longer a problem. And we have some windows, a large expansive windows here in the all ages collaborative space on the west. And we will likely be providing some sort of vertical fin there also to help control the light late in the day as the sun goes down. So that is my very quick and brief overview. So we'll turn it over to the gentleman from Circle Design to tell us a little bit about the mechanical system.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, David, Ron?
Yep, thanks, thanks, Chris. So I just wanted to, I guess I'd go ahead and start off. What I'd like to do is share what we call a zoning plan. And what this is going to do is this is going to show you how we imagine the building to operate from a temperature control perspective. So this is going to show what rooms have thermostats and how the, the whole building is going to be divided up. So if I can share my screen here real quick. Let me do this. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and start in the lower level. We'll go ahead and go through this first. Chris kind of talked through what we've got as far as rooms and stuff down here. So we'll have cooling in the electrical room, maintenance office, the maintenance storage room over here and down here in the library storage area. We'll have a separate dedicated unit to cool the IT room because that's going to be critical to keep that temperature regulated. And then the elevator machine room will have that cooled as well. We have a couple of areas down here in the lower level that are just going to be heat only. So this would be the mechanical room. The elevator lobby and then over here, this, we've got the vestibule down here in the lower level. So this is kind of the airlock from the garage to the stairs that you can come up to get in, up into the library. So we want to make sure that we're not getting a bunch of cold air coming in through there. So we are going to have a ceiling in the garage and that will be heated because we're going to have the, the weight, some of the waste pipes from the, from the library itself are going to be run in the ceiling. So we want to make sure that we don't freeze any of those drain lines down there. The sprinkler system down here is going to be a dry, what we call a dry pipe system. So there won't be any water in the pipes that's just standing. So we won't have to worry about freezing any of those lines. Okay, so if we move upstairs here. So pretty much all the rooms that Chris walked through, you, you guys can kind of see here, like this, for example, here, the staff lounge, we're going to have, this is going to be a zone of control. So we'll have a thermostat that will take care of this area. We'll have one for the teen center. Question is, do we need the teen meeting room to be separate from this teen center? I don't, I don't know if we need to. That's kind of something for you guys to think about. We, we can probably go either way. The large meeting room, because we have the divider between the two sides, we will have separate zone control here and here. So for example, if, if this room is split and this room's full of people, you might need cooling in there, but you might not on this side. So that'll help save a little bit of energy because you won't have to be moving as much, as much air. But then when this thing opens, you'll still be able to have, have a good temperature in there. The reception lobby and the bathrooms, these are all completely interior spaces. So those are all going to kind of be on one zone together. The teaching kitchen is going to be its own zone as well. Obviously, if this is full of people and they're actually cooking, you're going to be generating more heat. So you might want to cool that space where, you know, out here in the reception lobby, you don't have to worry about that. The collaboration space, this will be a, this will be a zone. And then the staff work area, this will also be a zone here as well. Regarding this area here, we'll have, we'll have a separate zone of control here. We'll have extra electric heaters and that's, and that's to help temper any outdoor era staffer coming in and out through the vestibule. Same with this vestibule, we'll have extra heat in this vestibule to, to help temper that air as people are coming in and out. We have the, so the main entryway, we've got the public service area. And we will, so this will be a zone. This, this might be more of an operational question, but we've got the two separate conference rooms here. Currently I have them on one zone. I've got this blue line here drawn saying, you know, something to think about. Do we want to split these and each have their own zone? It's easy enough for us to do. The only thing is every time you add a zone, you're adding costs because you've got more controls, more equipment in addition to the ductwork. So just something to think about if you think this small little four person room is worth, is worth the extra cost to have, have this control split up. And then coming up here to the juvenile area, one thing we're considering is, so we've got a lot, we've got glass and we've got exterior exposure here. We're considering having this as kind of a zone, an exterior zone so we can take care of, you know, any of the heat, heat loss that comes in here in the wintertime. And then this would be a separate zone here. We could, we could always do this as one large area, but this room is deep enough that I'm, through my experience, it's always best to try and take care of the envelope load separate from any of this other space in here. So, and then the other question is, in this children's program room, is this going to be isolated and full where we would want this to be its own zone? Or is it okay to be out here with the rest of this? So that kind of, kind of is a programming question for you guys on how, on how you're going to use that.
Can I ask a quick question also?
Sure, absolutely.
Talking about that programming space in the children's room there. I, I'm trying to envision what the windows are on the other side. Does the win, does the window also extend into that programming space?
Yeah, you can, you can kind of see it here. From here to here is a window.
Okay.
We'll have.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We'll have, we'll have a heat here in the stairwells because that stairwell goes down to the garage. And then this, your main collection here, we've got this as one large zone. So this is one big, big volume of space. And so this will all be its own zone. We will have some additional perimeter heat to help with the heat loss through all, through the big, large windows. We, I don't have any of that shown right now, but that is going to be something that we're going to do. And then we'll have separate zones here in the quiet room and these conference rooms and then your study tables over here. So that's kind, that's kind of the idea, what we're going to do. And then, you know, as we develop the, the design, we'll have, we'll start showing more ductwork and that sort of thing. And you can see how all that's going to work out. We will have rooftop units on the, there's a low roof over here over this area. So our rooftop units will be located over there. And then the ductwork's going to drop down into the ceiling and then we'll route above the ceiling and throughout the rest of the library.
Great, thanks, David. So are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, great. So with that, we would open it up to any questions you may have. Um, yes, John? Or Carrie?
Kari, yeah, thanks. That's fine, that's fine. I just had a couple of questions. Looking at the roof line, I mean, it's beautiful. It looks like a bird taking off. But with that sloping roof, what are they doing with the drainage?
We're, we're still working those details out. We're, we're very early in the, in the process. I have a meeting on Friday with a structural engineer actually to discuss that and go through what our options are. Right now we are considering interior roof drains, which are really common. I tend to like interior roof drains because it puts them on the warm side of the roof. So when you have freezing, you don't have to worry about gutters and things like that freezing. So, but yeah, and we've got a couple of other options to explore, so.
And then I had another question. The driveway, I'm assuming it's going to be paved going down from the top down a hill. How is that hill very steep and does direct sunlight go directly on that driveway?
I don't know how to describe and I don't have, I, what the slope is. From the parking lot down to the garage level, it, it is a 15 foot difference. So we're dropping 15 feet from the west to the east. And the drive goes basically three quarters of the length of the building. It is the north side of, of the building. So it will likely not get a lot of direct sun in the wintertime.
So I'm just wondering, and this may be pie in the sky, if it might be exorbitantly expensive or not to, to put some heating, heated things on that driveway for safety concerns?
Right, that's certainly something we can take note of and, and look at. I'm going to venture a guess at this, at this point that budget wise, it'll probably be cost prohibitive, but. Question and something we can look into. Question and something we can look into.
And what again is the total square feet of the top floor of the library?
Christine, do you know that off the top of your head?
It's approximately 21,000 square feet if you also include the atrium stair. The 21,000.
That just gives me a better image of the heating zones, just knowing that mathematically. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah, Kathy.
I'm curious about any new developments in HVAC systems that would kind of take into account of purifying the air? Or are you looking into anything like that? You know, in future scenarios where we have another pandemic and the HVAC system can do something to help with ventilation airing out or mitigating the germs, I guess.
Yep, David, can you address that?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things. First off, there's. There's guidelines as far as the ventilation that we are required to provide. And so we are going to make sure that we have all of that ventilation covered. So you'll be, you'll be constantly getting some outdoor air mixed in with the return air as, when the building's in operation. So there's always going to be fresh air coming into the building from outside. So you're going to, you're going to have some air turnover that way. The other thing we're looking at, and honestly, everybody's asking us this. So it's a good, good question that you asked this, Kathy. There are some air cleaning type of devices that you can install in the units. There's, there's a couple of options. One, you can do UV light on the cooling coil. And so that kills any of the bacterial growth or anything that's on the, the cooling coil itself. And then there's also a couple of different types of air systems like bipolar ionization or photocatalytic oxidation. And so these are things that you put in the units. It goes into the airstream and it kind of blasts apart the, any of the contaminants and stuff. So then they can get filtered out by your regular filters. So we're, we're exploring all options at this point. We've not settled on anything just yet. But, but going forward, pretty much all new buildings we're doing, we're putting these in. So we'll, we'll be looking to do the same thing here.
And are there any windows that open?
No, we are not planning any windows that open. On public buildings like this, we tend to not recommend that because as soon as someone opens the, the window, it throws the heating and cooling system off. And so it doesn't necessarily function the, the way it's intended to. So, and it also, if that window doesn't get closed, it becomes a, a security issue, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question about the awning on the exterior of the building coming from the parking lot to the front entrance.
Yes.
Will it provide enough shelter from weather? For the public?
Yes, we're, we're anticipating that, that it should. We're showing it at eight or 10 feet, extending eight to 10 feet from the face of the building. So there, there is quite a bit of cover there, so.
Thank you.
I had a question. Which I'm surprised I hadn't thought of earlier in this process. But does our parking. Plan accommodate employee parking as well as public parking?
Yeah, our plan, our overall plan is to have, I think it's, are we at 108 spots? Is that correct? Am I? Which would accommodate our staff, which we assume would never be more than six or eight people at one time and public.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't remember the exact number of parking spaces now because it's been sort of in flux as, as things have developed, so.
We have a real mix of parking. I mean, you'll have vehicular parking that is, you know, standard cars. There's also parking that will be for vans. There's also ADA parking, accessibility parking, both on the upper level at grade as well as in the garage. And the intention is for the library employees to have designated spaces. Also taking into consideration any library volunteers. We also have a parking area on the, the west parking lot that accommodates buses. And so there'll be school groups who come through here. So there's a big mix of parking at this point in the project. And there's also, sorry, I forgot about it. There's bicycle parking and there's scooter parking that will occur in the area of the entrance. It's on the west side, southwest corner of the building. There's an area there for covered bicycle and scooter parking.
Great. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one more question. It, I don't know if it's about the, well, I'll just ask it. Is there any consideration? I know the main library, they have the Friends of the Library bookstore. Is there anything like that in this new branch?
There is not a plan for. Specific friends space here only because we ran out of room.
Okay.
We talked about the possibility that they might want to have a kiosk or something like that. But I think the other piece of that is just the, the volunteer nature of their.
Yeah.
Their workforce and whether or not they could actually even continue to, to staff it.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes.
Ah, Chris and Christine, it looks really good. Very happy to hear about airtightness and HVAC looks like it's being well thought out. I think, I think it all looks really good. And I, and then I just wanted to let you all know that I'm going to have to leave fairly soon, so. If I disappear, don't try to resurrect me on the Zoom.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you, David. Appreciate hearing those kind words. Thanks.
And I will echo that too. This is very exciting. It looks wonderful and I'm very excited to see the, the finished product as well as follow along as it gets built.
The library has been a great group to work with. You know, it's, it's just a real pleasure for us to be working on this project. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you, and thanks for the thorough update and all this hard work. And it's great that we've been able to move forward this much with this important project, even during the pandemic and all the other challenges we've been facing. So thank you all. And we'll move on now to new business. First, is this first one actually, it's, it's not an action item, is it Marilyn? You're muted.
It is an action item only if you need it to be. So this is just information about the conflict of interest statement. If any of you need to fill this out, please do so and return to me. This is just our annual check.
So is, we don't?
You don't need to do anything tonight.
But do we all, we, do we all have to fill this out or only if it applies to us?
Only if it applies to you.
Does anyone have any questions on that form? Would it be safer for us all to report back to you that it either send you the form or tell you it does not apply to us, just so we confirm everyone's?
That's a great, that's a, a great idea. Actually, perhaps we could do a little roll call here and say, do you need it? Do you need to fill it out or not? And then I'll know what to wait for. Does that work? Okay.
Okay, John Walsh.
Well, I can't, I, I'd have to read it more carefully to make sure it doesn't apply to me.
Okay, so if that's, if that's the case, then I'm not going to put you all on the spot here. Why don't you just send me a quick email and let me know in the next couple of days if you need to send it in?
And we can check back at our next meeting or work session if we haven't heard from anybody.
Thank you.
And now we do have an action item. Do we have a motion to approve? Resolution authorizing the board president to sign monthly board of trustees business documents?
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second. Again, this is for in our current pandemic situation where we can't all be in person to authorize the president to do the signing. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, please take the roll, Lorraine.
Hey, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
David still here? Nope.
No.
Fred Rysinger.
Yes.
Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Essery.
Aye.
Kathy Loser.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then similarly. Is this part of the same resolution? Or? We have a second agenda item, authorizing board president to sign real estate documents?
That's a different one. There isn't, if there is no written resolution on that one. This is just a, a vote that we're taking that you will be able to sign these documents when they're available.
Okay, I didn't see a page for that. So do we have a motion to authorize board president to sign necessary documents to close the real estate transaction pursuant to the offer of purchase?
Don't move.
We had a motion from Kathy and a second from Fred. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll, Lorraine.
Okay, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Rysinger.
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Essery.
Aye.
And Kathy Loser.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution about transferring funds. $1,129,000 from the operating fund to the rainy day fund. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund? And this resolution allows us to transfer most of the operating fund surplus for 2020 to the rainy day fund. The operating fund surplus for 2020 was a little over $1.4 million. The transfer amount on the resolution is $1,129,000. This amounts to about 10% of the 2020 budget, which is the limit on how much we can transfer to the rainy day fund in a year. Any questions? What happened? Go ahead, Kari.
Sorry. Why so much?
Because our revenue from property taxes, it goes up each year by the growth quotient. And. We, we've seen a trend when we look at our surplus, our operating surplus of it kind of growing each year. And I think the, the, the basic answer is that our growth quotient has been higher than, than the rate of increase in our operating costs. I mean, most of our operating cost is wages. Wages go up by roughly 3% a year. Well, look at next year, 2022. Our growth quotient is 4.2%. So our, our revenue is going to go up more than our expense. And that, and, and we're fortunate. We're very fortunate to be in this position. And you will see from the information that I've included on the effect of the pandemic that our years of having a high growth quotient will, will change dramatically maybe for 2022. I'm, I've, I've projected that we'll drop to somewhere to two and a half to, to 2.8, which we've been there before, we'll, we'll be fine, but we just won't see these huge surplus numbers. And, you know, we, the, the branch operating expenses are estimated to be about $700,000 a year. So we're, we feel very well covered and well prepared financially to operate the branch.
Well, that extra money, it'll be helpful for the expenses for the new branch too.
Absolutely.
We, we've eliminated fines, as have other libraries. Does that, are fines an important part of our budget?
The, it's, I'll just say that by eliminating fines, the, the, the estimated impact there is $40,000 to $50,000 a year in, in reduced revenue. And you, you can see that, I mean, we experienced that most of 2020. And we still, and, and we still have a very healthy operating surplus. Does that $40,000 to $50,000 impact of taking away the fines, take into account the costs associated with, you know, collections and managing the fines? Is that a net gain, net loss or? No, so, so if you take into account the, the cost of administering fines that you're talking about, then the cost savings would probably be a little higher. Any other questions? Then I think we're ready for the roll, Lorraine. So voting on approval of the resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund.
Okay, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Rysinger.
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Essery.
Aye.
And Kathy Loser.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution as part of the new branch. There's an obligation to do some. Tree planting. And this resolution affirms our obligation and financial ability to complete the required improvements to subdivision lot two, located at 900 West Gordon Pike in section 17 of Perry Township. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion from Fred and a second from Jamie. Anything to add to this, Marilyn?
Just that as part of any subdivision plan, there is a code that goes along with it that requires so many trees along the road, et cetera. We won't be able to do some of this until after they finish the improvements to Gordon Pike. But some of them we might, this is just to say we can and we will.
Are you going to make sure that we're doing native species and not invasive species?
Absolutely. That's our plan. And, and we actually hope that any of those natives, native species that we might have to remove could be transplanted.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Then you may take the roll, Lorraine, please.
Hey, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger?
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart?
Aye.
Kari Essery?
Aye.
And Kathy Loser?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have, do we have a motion to approve the 2021 CATS contract with the city of Bloomington, which we received in our emails earlier today?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Christine and a second from Jamie. Anything to tell us about this one, Michael?
Well, actually, there's a kind of a question, a procedural question for you, I guess. As a part of this, there's also the PEG user agreement. So I don't know if you need a second motion to approve that. So I'll, I'll bat that back over the net to you.
Can you tell us what the PEG agreement is?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The PEG user agreement is basically just a document that the, we started doing these probably about eight to 10 years ago. And this just establishes how the PEG channels, public, educational, governmental channels will be used. The city has six channels. The library operates five of those channels and WTLU operates another channel. So it, it just establishes how those channels will be used, what the limitations are and severability should, you know, should there be some sort of systemic problems? So it's just, just a use agreement. So there's the PEG user agreement and then there's of course the, the regular CATS funding contract with the city of Bloomington.
Well, let's stick with the contract now and then we'll take another motion to approve the PEG users agreement. So anything new or different with the contract with the city this year?
No, it's exactly as we had for 2020 with the exception that the amount has been increased, been increased by 1% for 2021. So the total amount is $451,294.26 for 2021 from the city of Bloomington.
Great. Any questions or discussion on the contract with, between CATS and the city of Bloomington? Seeing none, please take the roll to approve that contract, Lorraine.
Hey, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger?
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart?
Aye.
Kari Essery?
Aye.
And Kathy Loser?
We didn't hear you, Kathy. Or I didn't.
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then on the PEG user agreement that Michael told us about, that was a separate document in the email. Do we have a motion to approve the city of Bloomington and Monroe County Public Library Public Education and Government Channel Programming Agreement for 2021?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion from Kathy and a second from Kari. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Okay, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger?
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart?
Aye.
Kari Essery?
Aye.
And Kathy Loser?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on those documents, Michael, and all the other CATS stuff that you do so well and your team.
Thank you. And I just want to add, I want to thank all of our governmental funding partners because, you know, with, without their help, you know, the library can't handle what we do by themselves. So the help we get from the city, from the county and the town of Elletsville, absolutely indispensable. And I, my undying gratitude goes out to them. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael, and the board joins you in thanking all our government partners. Next, do we have a motion to approve the emergency paid sick leave policy?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kyle, you want to summarize this again for us?
Basically, this is a mirror is what we did earlier this year in 2020 for the FF-CRA leave. We wish to continue part of that in order to encourage our staff to main, you know, be healthy and not feel like they have to come to work when they're not feeling well related to COVID. And also, so encourage that as well as help all of our other employees and patrons stay healthy. So this once again covers all staff, even including our part-time people or those that are non-benefited. We would be following our same processes and it requires somebody that is advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine, someone experiencing symptoms and/or somebody that has a bona fide need to care for an individual that they're responsible for. So it's 10 days of leave. We checked with numerous other libraries. This is very much in step with what they're doing. And the, the, this is based on normally scheduled work hours. The only thing it's not covering right now, nor have we seen others do this, is to cover folks that are choosing to stay home with their children to do learning from home. That's something they, they have, you know, sick and personal leave options available to them. So we are working with them by allowing them to use sick leave if that's the case. Any questions?
I have a question. Is this in line with what the county and city governments are doing in terms of the, the policy or the number of days? This is in line to?
It's, so most places are continuing with that 10 days. That was the original amount we did. I've not heard any drumbeats as far as what's coming up in the near future as far as the government's concerned. I think they're mainly focused on increasing contributions to, to all of our people in the United States that need help, assistance with, with, from a money perspective. But we've not heard anything about this perspective being changed or added to. So this is definitely an extension provided by employers that want to assist their staff.
And I was going to say, Kathy, that MCCSC is bringing the same thing to their board too.
Does it, is it under the guise of the Family Medical Leave Act? Do they get more? I know that there was something happening.
Yeah, that's, that's really the tricky part, but all of this has always been under FMLA, just the way workers' comp is and some ADA situations. So these hours would count towards somebody FMLA, should they, and when they'd really feel that as if they also had another FMLA event. And those numbers would count to their total amount allowed in this case per year because we do it on a per year basis. But.
Thank you.
Really affected anybody so far.
Any other discussion on this?
Oh, I did want to state that we worked with the, the LMC, provided us with a FAQ and we kind of helped out with the, the answers to that. And that was very helpful and we'll be sharing that with all staff.
Thank you, Kyle. Seeing no further discussion, please take the roll.
All right, John Walsh.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger?
Aye.
Jamie Burkhart?
Aye.
Kari Essery?
Aye.
Kathy Loser?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's now time for public comment. I don't see any, but if there are any members of the public on the call who would like to address the board, now's the time to do so. Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call for the adjournment? Lorraine, please. Oh, Tom's shaking his head. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.